Hello, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three voting meeting of the Carleton School District's Board of Directors. Can we open with the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a roll, please.
Yes. Director Apple.
Here.
Director Frank.
Here.
Director Honchar.
Here.
Director Simson.
Here.
Director Kustar.
Here.
Director Brian.
Here.
Director Vobriana.
Here.
Director Zlutske.
Here.
Director Schreiber.
He could be here. And then public comment right now. Right, right. So at this time invite members of the public who have liked to comment on anything on the agenda, have an opportunity to speak. And I see we have a couple of folks who have signed up to speak, and I don't believe these are agenda items. So we do have a time for the end of the meeting where you address the board. So does anybody have anything regarding? No? Okay. So we move on to the minutes for the reorganization meeting of December sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. And the minutes for the voting meeting of December sixth. All right. I may have a motion to approve the minutes of the December sixth, two thousand and twenty-two reorganization.
I shall move.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call and pay per say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay, any input? No? Okay. How about a motion to approve the minutes of the December sixth, two thousand and twenty-two voting meeting?
So move second.
Move to seconded. Any discussion? Call and pay per say aye.
Aye.
opposed next. Motion passed. And finally, a motion to approve the minutes of the January tenth, two thousand and twenty-three committee meeting.
Second.
Move to seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call and pay per say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. So we had an executive session prior to the board meeting where we discussed real estate and personnel issues, and we'll go on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Director Apple. We have three reports, superintendent report, we also have a technology report and a facilities report. We're going to start with Mr. Jones, who is going to provide us with an update with a little bit of technology information. So, Mr. Jones, you all set?
Yeah. Thank you, guys, for having me. I know we only get to see each other like twice a year or so. Glad to see you, guys. We'll just do a quick rundown of kind of what the technology department has been doing kind of over the summer and then into this year and where we are now. So far, from the end of school year until right now, we've processed about three hundred tickets. So that's depending on emails that we get from teachers or parents or phone calls, those kinds of things kind of all get added up into that number. There's actually probably more than that, but that's what we can totally account for. Promethean Active Panels, we've put in a hundred and seven. We talked a little bit about that, I think. Last year, we were in the process of doing that, and most of them were done, but we are completed with that project now. So all of the teaching space now have these interactive panels, and hopefully they'll last us some time. Chromebooks, as I think we all know now, we're one-to-one, and K to two being Chromebooks that we keep in the building. Kind of looking at possibly as we refresh those, moving into touchscreen Chromebooks for, you know, the smaller students, just a little bit easier for them to manipulate than obviously a mouse or a track pad. So we've been getting some feedback from the teachers there, and so probably will end up doing, moving forward. There are some down there now, but completely change that. Three to twelve, their take home, and we've still been kind of working on cycles. The seniors this year, feel bad, those Chromebooks are not the best, but they have some of the oldest right now that will be phased out. And so right now, third grade and eighth grade are the years that you get new devices. So they have about a four- or five-year life cycle generally from Google where you can update them, and so that's kind of what we follow. So as they get to those grades, they'll look at newer ones, and those old things will start being phased out. So we thank them for dealing with that. The new devices that we get right now, they're all Lenovo one hundred E's, and we have about two hundred and twenty to issue next year. So, you know, I thank you, guys, for really putting together a budget that allows us to, you know, support our students in that way. It's definitely a big cost, so we appreciate that. To date, we've done a hundred and seventy-six repairs on Chromebooks. Mrs. Zenon, she is like the Chromebook fixer. She works very hard, you know. We get probably three or four, five a day. You know, students miraculously just come in with broken things. You know, I don't know how it happens, neither did they, apparently. So, but she always does a really good job. So very lucky to have her. It's the only thing she does, but one of the big things for sure. Moving into kind of some of the software and just cloud-based stuff that we use, Dr. Mantich, I'm sure I've talked to you guys in the past about all the different curriculum that has been moving forward, and a lot of that is online-based. So students logging into that software is always kind of a thing, right? Because you're using passwords and all that fun stuff. Right now, we're working with some of those programs to be SSO or single sign on, and that helps, especially with the little student, or the smaller students. But we're not all the way there yet. We're hoping that in this next school year that we'll be able to get almost all of our programs that way. That will likely save on time, educational time, because it takes, especially for the elementary-age students, you know, five to ten minutes sometimes to get them logged in. So we really want to cut down on that and allow our teachers to start educating our students quicker. But that will be kind of. Teacher laptops, we are lucky enough to be able to use Esser and Harp Esser money to start our refresh cycles for our teacher devices. And so we look to start purchasing a little bit before July, May, near June, just so that we can get any newer models, so we're not working with something that's already outdated or will be outdated or being phased out. So we're just going to start here at the high school, and that will start the cycle for all the elementary buildings. And then we'll probably do, try to do some kind of either teacher buyback or allow, you know, those devices to be sold, because they're not bad, but unfortunately, when you start a cycle, you have to start with something that's not horrible, so that by the time you're done with your placement, people aren't like, this thing doesn't work. We don't want that, right? And then Power School, we just had made it official recently that we will be not really sending home report cards anymore. That's just going to be something that you can see in your parent portal. And so with that, we just sent letters home to the elementary students, and we've done that in the past, but we've done just recently sending all of the usernames and passwords for both the parents and the students. So if anybody who ends up watching this or is in the meeting has any issues accessing those accounts, they can always reach out to us at p s at carleton.k twelve dot P A dot U S, and we'll get back to you with your login credentials. Yeah, but that's all I have. Trying to make sure. Does anybody have any questions?
Josh, what's the life of a Chromebook?
Well, it really depends on the Chromebook. Generally, you're seeing about five years that Google will allow those updates to happen. During COVID, they actually extended some of them, but now they're pretty much back to about five years.
How about the teacher laptops?
Well, those, as long as the hardware is pretty good, you're looking at, well, probably seven-ish years.
So the report cards?
Yes.
I think this is something that folks have been, you know, wanting for a while, is to be able to access their students' grades, and that's a part of it. But I also wondered, there's got to be a few folks out there that don't have, I don't want to say don't have access to the internet, but it's not convenient for them or comfortable for them. Do we have a way of maybe just getting them a hard copy of?
Yeah, absolutely.
And finding out who they are?
Well, I mean, yeah, I suppose we could send something out, definitely says if you need a hard copy or something like that, just let us know. And anytime they could either email myself or get ahold of the building office, and we could definitely do that. But I can print them out to the main office. We can definitely take care of it.
Most of these who will require a paper copy would be the newer immigrants, the refugees.
Yes, that's a good point. I know that our ESL teachers do a really great job of communicating with those families, and so I can definitely shoot them off an email just to say, hey, as a reminder, if we need to print these students off, you know, report cards, send them home, we can definitely do that. So I'll write that down. Thank you.
Junior, senior high school, we, for the past two years, we've been going without the hard copied report cards. So junior, senior high school has been accustomed to not having the hard copied report cards. We do have several parents who do request a hard copied report card. They make that request, the building principal, building principal is able to get the student a hard copy then and send home. At the present time, we may have, it's five or six.
Sure.
So at this time, this go around, since it is the first time, can we send something, paper, home at the elementary level, just to tell parents, hey, it's here, go get it, go find it this way? I mean, those kids don't always communicate this. I know that the email went out, I mean, I got the email, but for parents who may not be getting emails or easily accessible to the emails, can we send something on paper home this time?
We can do a hard copy with the director. Basically, we'll send it.
Not the report card itself, just saying, hey, it's January fourteenth, they're available, here's how to get it. If you have issues, contact the email address that you just gave, so that people know.
Yeah, we did send, we did send home with students and the elementary schools the instructions, though we didn't say anything about that it was going to. So, yeah, we could definitely.
I don't think it's necessary at the high school level, obviously, if we've been doing it, but at the elementary level, that first time through, I think it would be helpful to flag it for those parents.
Well, not only that, but I think that in the likely event, you know, somebody is having trouble at the elementary level, I would think they'd probably in person ask you the secretary at the front desk or even the principal. So if we had like a few, like them ready to go with that screen vote, too, that probably would, I think. Anything else?
Well, thank you, guys, very much appreciated.
Mr. Prater, quick update on the facilities.
Last Friday, I met with the Crafton Fire Marshal, Daniel Glancy. They've had, Crafton's always had on the docket a fire inspection, but they've never had a fire marshal. So now they currently have a fire marshal, and I met with him for the first time. We did a building walkthrough. He had, he found a few violations that are pretty simple to fix. So I've been working with Marsha, and we're going to take care of some of the few, the four violations that he found. Moving on to the future, I spoke with the fire department, they were also present, well, a member of the fire department, the volunteer fire department, and I would like to do a training with them one evening every year, and I want to reach out to the other two local fire departments to do a training in each building, just to get them more familiar with the buildings in case we ever had an emergency at the Carnegie Elementary or Carleton Junior-Senior High School. So I'm going to reach out to each local first responders and fire departments to, you know, try to schedule something once a year, probably every spring. Moving forward with some of things that have been implemented into the buildings, at Carnegie Elementary, the four side basketball hoops have been replaced, the new ones have been installed. I'm getting a lot of positive feedback from Nathan, our athletic director, and from some of the local youth organizations that they love those new basketball hoops. So that's something very positive that's recently happened. Also, the digital sign outside of Carnegie Elementary, the artwork just came in this week, or last week, it was installed on Friday. I have been working with an electrician to try to find some alternative means for the digital sign at the high school. Right now, there's a price on putting, adding a service, a separate service to have a digital sign electrified twenty-four hours a day. I'm trying to work with another electrical contractor to see if we could do an alternative electrical feed to that, so we could have that sign on twenty-four hours without disrupting the power to the lights right now. So hopefully I can get some answers on that, and we could have the digital sign installed at the high school within the next month or two. The supply fan motor for the pole pack was, it was, I think, it was ordered on Thursday last week. They're telling me that there's a, they have it on a shelf, there would be three to four-day lead time for delivery. I would think it's probably going to be about a week. So I have train on call right now, so once we receive it, I'll call Pittsburgh Train, and they will come and install it next day. So hopefully, either by the end of this week or early next week, the indoor temperature in the space will be adjusted and we'll be comfortable in there again. Construction updates at Crafton, the left window pillar is one hundred percent complete with the terracotta installation. The right pillar is about ninety percent complete. The foreman on the job for Marsa, Masonary, he brought me over there, and he's found the caps that go on top of those columns are made out of copper, and there's some very substantial gaps. So I've gotten in touch with P A Roofing. We were there yesterday, they are going to give us a cost to replace the, all the copper, so we could have that watertight. The contract, the foreman from Mars is afraid of water getting into where their new brickwork and where the new terracotta has been installed, and in the wintertime, having to freeze and expand and possibly doing damage to all the new work that has just been done. And then yesterday, I met with Jacqueline Cohen from Draw Collective and four engineers from Tower Engineering. We did the building walkthroughs with the architectural firm. Their plan is to take all their findings, make a report for the school district, present it to the board, and she would like to come to a board meeting and present what they found, make suggestions on future renovations at the two elementary buildings, Crafton and Carnegie. They feel that it probably will take about two months to compile all that information and conduct, and put a report together to get to the board. So you should be seeing something from them soon. So that's all I have right now. Does anybody have any questions?
So when we talk about the copper on top of, are you talking about like on the terracotta that's in the sod?
Yeah. There's columns lumped out. They have, there's metal to try to take the water away from the building.
Okay.
That metal has some pretty substantial gaps in it. They're just afraid of water penetrating behind the brickwork and the terracotta. If it gets cold enough, it can expand, and it could cause some issues.
Do you think maybe, or did they say, maybe that contributed to the deterioration of the ironwork?
It's very possible. There's been water penetration for a long time, especially on that, the right column, where the steel had to be completely replaced already into the building. They, there was some, it looked like sweat sheets. There were some really big holes on some of the I-beams. So it was good that there was exposed, and it was all replaced.
Thanks. So they'll get us a class coming soon?
Yeah, yeah. I think within a day or so, I should get a price from P A Roofing to do the whole amount of work.
Bill, I have a question. First of all, the announcement board in Carnegie is beautiful. Wow, it's so up to date. But the thing is, do the announcements originate here or at the principal's office? Because there was an announcement welcoming Amazon, but I don't think they visited Carnegie Elementary.
I wouldn't, I don't know.
They did visit Carnegie.
Did they?
Maybe she did.
Oh, so it originates in the principal's office? Oh, that's great.
It's already in the right.
Is that the robotics thing, isn't it?
What's that?
Is that the robotics thing that they do?
The Howard Code.
Yeah.
Right. Josh can also control it from his office, but most of it comes from the principal. Great.
So it's individual, I see, each school. Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Prater. Superintendent's report, just very briefly. The American Rescue Plan requires us to go through the Health and Safety Plan once every six months. The last time we reviewed our Health and Safety Plan was August sixteenth of two thousand and twenty-two, so the six-month is in February. So the reason that I bring this up now is that if there are any recommended changes for the Health and Safety Plan, that we would want to get those on the board agenda for February. Present time, I do not have any recommendations for changing the Health and Safety Plan. At the present time, Allegheny County is at the low level, and as previously shared, that's by new cases, hospitalizations, percent of occupied inpatient beds, and so on. The two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three school year plan continues to take some recommendations in place by those agencies. Decision to mask is totally up to the individual. We continue to have masks available, face shields available, N ninety-five masks for individuals who would request. And then the only time that we do have masking is if an individual is sent to the school nurse to assess any type of COVID symptoms, so very similar to the healthcare setting. Continue to operate at full capacity. We are able to work back to very much normal type of delivery of instruction to our students. As far as mask-wearing, we have very few students in the buildings wearing, electing to wear masks. Like we said before, hygiene and sanitization, we've more or less adopted a lot of the principals throughout COVID and put them into normal practice that will probably continue from this point forward, moving on with hygiene, with air circulation and so on. We've made a lot of positive changes there. Positive cases still remains the same, individuals with COVID, they isolate for five days. We strongly encourage them to wear a mask upon their return. We do not contact trace, and a number of new cases are reported out to Allegheny County Health Department. At present time, we have three cases in January from students, five from staff. Year-to-date totals are sixty-six from students, sixteen from staff. August and September were probably the highest months. December, I don't think we had any. And just coming back after a break, there has been a few cases. So we'll leave it up to either new business or old business. If any school directors would like to see any recommended changes to our Health and Safety Plan, I'd ask you to bring that up during that time. But as mentioned before, I don't have any recommended changes. District news, at the junior, senior high school, we are offering after-school tutoring. It's offered Monday through Thursday, two fifteen to four fifteen. We have an activity bus that runs out to the community stops at four fifteen. Mondays and Wednesdays, it's math and English, and Tuesdays and Thursdays, it's science and social studies. So any students who are struggling with their coursework have a great opportunity, two hours a day, to meet with one of our math, science, English, or social studies teachers to get remediated, to avoid any type of summer programming, which does have minimums set in place. In order to be eligible for summer school, you need to have at least a forty-five percent in that coursework, and you can't have more than twenty days of absence throughout the course of the school year. So it's a great opportunity to take advantage of the tutoring, occurs right here in this room after school. Pennsylvania Stock Market Game, we had teachers and students across the state that participated in the annual stock market game this past fall. Prizes are awarded for competitive sessions based on region and grade level grouping, and it also allows students to experience the thrill of investing fake money. They get a hundred thousand dollars each, and they go through and they invest it, they take ownership of that investments, they go through, they follow the current stock market trends. So there's a lot of critical thinking and aspects to that as they go through and they monitor their investments. So prizes are given out at the end to both individual students and then also to schools. So Carleton did, they placed first as far as the winning Western representation. So they did an outstanding job. The advisor is Mr. Givaden, who works very closely with the team throughout the process. So congratulations to that group of students. We had a lot of great individuals and a lot of team effort there. Pittsburgh Penguins, the two thousand and twenty-three Tech Academy winners, we have, I believe it's three or four winners, we had three winners, we had two seniors, Abby, I'm sorry, Albi Vargis and Lance Anderson, and then along with freshman Jacob Floyd, they're selected to take part of the Pittsburgh Penguin two thousand and twenty-three Tech Academy, which is, it's extremely exciting. At Carnegie, we had Parkway West C T C Visit, part of their healthcare occupations technology. We had a Carleton alumni, Dawn Wood, who is the teacher out at Parkway, who leads that group. She and the Parkway students came to Carnegie to work with our students. They learned a lot of safety techniques that can be applied for when students are either by themselves or with friends, as far as being able to take safe actions and positive decision-making. Program also brought awareness to career pathways and skill development for students as well as eliminating safety for all students. That was working in coordination with fourth-grade teacher Julie Lewis. Nice program. And then also at Carnegie, they are steaming into a new year. Grades three through six have been working on robotic rotations. It's going through three different classes that they move through, taking a look at basically three different types of things, Dash Robots, B-Bots, and Code and Go Mouse Robots. Students work on puzzles, they've learned how to code, the Dash Robots using block coding. They also used arrows to code with the B-Bots to compete in a gingerbread maze, and then also the Code and Go Mouse Robots. Students basically took the provided pieces to a maze, and then they programmed the mouse robot to go through that maze then. So a lot of coding. What we've recognized in today's industry and labor market is that coding is extremely important. These types of skills foster collaboration, critical thinking skills, and being able to prepare students for a specific type of field work. And then over at Crafton, we have Crafton Mingle Rotary. Once again, each year, they donate dictionaries to our third-grade students, they follow that up with some fun activities with the kids. So once again, it's always a gener- So once again, it's always a generous donation on behalf of Crafton Ingram Rotary that we're very appreciative to forge a lot of positive relationships with different types of organizations within our community. January is also school district or school director appreciation month. It honors school directors across the state of Pennsylvania. In Carleton, we're extremely fortunate to have nine members of, of this board who are extremely hardworking, are dedicated. They put forth a, a lot of great effort. And in many cases, it's outside of their, their field or their area of expertise to understand school policy, school law, curriculum, a variety of different things that requires some deliberation, requires some, some great deep thought. I think the Carleton School District is very fortunate to have nine members who are able to take information, synthesize it, debate it, and be able to come up with good decisions on behalf of our students. So on behalf of the community, I would like to thank our nine members, eight that are here tonight, for your willingness to serve in that capacity. And in recognition, I do have some certificates for each of you to commemorate that.
Thank you.
Nice little certificate that's presented to them. Mr. Schreiber will also get his when he comes back from Anchorage. That concludes the superintendent report. I turn it back over to Dr. Krader. Do you, do you folks have anything you think ahead? I know you're not on the schedule. I don't want questions.
Okay. So we have the committee reports. I'll start with Parkway West Career Technical Center. Couple of things. The yearly budget is going out to districts to ratify. Each of the member districts in the jointure has to ratify the budget. The administration out there is, is staying in the index this year, so it won't be anything extraordinary as far as costs. They hired a new diesel instructor in November. That person is working out well. Whenever the program started out, we had one instructor, but it's proven to be a very popular field of study. So they added another instructor. First person they had hired decided that teaching just wasn't for her, unfortunately. So they were able to find a very qualified person who is working out quite well. Parkway was awarded a $38,000 grant from the PDE for equipment. And they purchased a Snap-on certification kit for autobody students and a stretcher nurse, nursing simulator for health and occupational technologies. And finally, the first quarter director's list is out and 26 Carleton students are on that list, so they're, they're doing well. That's all I have for Parkway. Any questions? Okay, then we can move on to Pathfinder.
Pathfinder, by tradition, we don't have meetings in December, so we're going to have a meeting tomorrow. I'll report on it next month.
Thank you. What should I ask them?
I have nothing at this time. Typically, voting is targeted until March. I believe that we should do that.
Okay. The legislative and PSBA is always.
Okay. I can report that our new PSBA advocacy ambassador is Lee Myford. So you can. She's on. So if, if you need to contact her, her contact information is on the PSBA site. Advocacy Day coming up this year is April 18th. You can participate in person in Harrisburg or virtually. And I've, I've participated virtually. It's easy enough to do and, you know, I'm happy to do that. So I am planning to be there for it, but if anybody else would want to, you know, you can just, you can register. They don't have registration up yet, but soon you'll be able to register for that. Also COSPA, the Consortium of State School Boards Association, is having their first annual conference, March 30th through April 2nd in Tampa, Florida, if anyone is so inclined. All, and I'd like to also talk about, we have a new secretary of education, Dr. Khalid Mumet, Mumen. He is former superintendent of Lower Marion School District, had also been named superintendent of the year in 2021. He served as a teacher, dean of students, principal, and central administrator. He's also author of a book called Problem Child. So if anybody's interested in hearing a little bit more about him or his philosophy, you can read his book. That's all I have for PSBA and legislative. And as far as the education foundation, we did not meet last time. We didn't have a meeting. So I don't have anything to report on that right now. Sure?
All right. So we're going to the agenda then. Could I have a, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve miscellaneous items 4.1 to 4.3.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on any of the motions or any of the items?
I have a question on 4.1, just to, to remind the board. Dr. Krader, your trip to San Antonio is covered by the Grable Foundation.
Yeah, the Grable Foundation, we received a $27,000 grant, of which $5,000 was allocated for the San Antonio trip, which does allow the district to take two employees. So both Dr. Manich and I will be going to San Antonio for that conference. And all but, I think, meals and a very small portion of that, which are designated on the, on the request, are covered by the grant. So very fortunate for the Grable Foundation. We just met with them today with another workshop, again, providing professional development to, to move districts into, into the future.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Are you going to further discussion? I'd like to have a vote on that. So all in favor of 4.1 through 4.3, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Moving on to finance. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve finance items 5.1 through 5.4.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Are you none? Vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Motion's passed. Moving on to personnel. We have one, four items, so I'd entertain a motion to approve personnel items 6.1 through 6.4.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Only discussion on that, in there is a resignation from Renee Flain. Renee was our payroll secretary. Recently took FMLA for childbirth and enjoyed the, the time of bringing her newborn into the world and is elected to, to resign. It's a very difficult decision to step away for her, but she's very greatly appreciated. She did a fantastic job in the business office and Mr. Bealby has benefited from, from the work and the district has benefited from the work she's done. So she will be a missed employee for sure. So we, we thank her for, for her service to the district.
Thanks for bringing it up. Any further discussion? Are you none? Let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote. Eyes have it. And then moving on to student activities, we have one, field trips request. So a motion to approve the additions to the list of field trips for 2022, 23 school year as submitted.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? None? We can vote. So all in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote. Eyes have it. Policy services. We have a, one item, a motion to approve the second reading of policy numbers. Well, motion to approve the second reading of the policy numbers as a list. Have a motion.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? None? Vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote. Eyes have it. Voting portion of the meeting, does any director have any old business that they would like to bring up? How about any new business that a director would like to discuss? None? So the next section is open forum. We have two folks on here who signed up to speak. So public comment under open forum is limited to three minutes, so we just request that you respect that. And first person on the list is Marlene Chieta.
Hi, I'm Marlene Chieta. I've lived in Crafton for 33 years. Also, I'm the Republican Committee Woman in Crafton. My question, has there ever been a Christian club here, ever?
There did used to be a student-led group. My son graduated last year and I feel like when he was maybe in eighth grade, there was a student-led group that met in the mornings. But, yeah. I don't know if it had an official name.
How long ago was that? About what year?
He graduated last year, so that would have been five, six years ago.
Would, would, if a student would want to begin a Christian club, would they be allowed to right now?
What they do, like we shared at the, at the last meeting, they would approach the principals, there's a form to fill out to request to any type of club or organization, go through that process. They would need to find a, a sponsor for that organization and then go through the approval process.
And would it be a prayer, like a parent help?
Parents can serve as, as sponsors for organizations. They just need to make sure that they have their, their three clearances on file.
So then you do allow Christian clubs in?
Absolutely.
Okay. Happy to hear that. Also, I have a question. Would I be permitted to go into the Crafton Elementary Library and view the books that they have there?
No, I think we shared that with you this afternoon. What you are, we would be able to do, and we have the list ready for you, is the list of all the books that we have that are titled and charted in both of our libraries at the elementary, which would be.
It's the right to know.
Yeah, which is the, the right to know request information, which we sent to you.
But what about if I meant like after school, when the children aren't there?
Yeah, see, there we would have to have staff on hand, which would be very difficult for us to, to facilitate. But just having the, the list of the books, I think, would be just as easy that you go through, search the names of the books, look for a quick little synopsis of, of the book itself.
Okay. And who actually picks the books for the library?
It is a combination between the school librarian, the building principal, and our director of curriculum instruction.
And remember, I had brought in the books on God's wisdom for little boys and girls. Had they considered them being that they're books about character building?
I don't know if she went through and reviewed those books or not, to be honest with you.
I had brought them in, you know, for them to look at. And they told me that they wouldn't look at them. I left them here for like a month. And I began that in, you know, last year. Took a long time for me to find out if they're approved.
I'm not aware if they, they've been approved or not, but I can, I can check.
And like, like according to the constitution, we're allowed to have comparative religion? And I wondered like if, because we have evolution being presented to the children, would we be also to compare with creation, biblical, biblical creation? We're talking God made, in the beginning, God created the heavens and earth.
There's comparative religion courses that, that are approved that can be taught. They would go through the curriculum cycle for proposals that would come out of basically department meetings and curriculum reviews, which is more or less generated from student interest. When we, when we generate new courses, it's generated from surveying student interest on what types of courses. We also take in a variety of things that we take into consideration as far as connections to career goals and so on. But yes, we are permitted to have a comparative religions types of, of coursework as long as it's embedded into the.
I had recommended the movie God of Wonders. It's a documentary comparing evolution and creation and proving creation really is the truth and evolution is a fantasy, actually. It would be like your imagination, imagining everything fell in perfect place after millions of years.
And a lot of times in, in several of our different courses, students are able to elect specific types of, of topics that they want to study and produce, which they could elect to, to do a comparative analysis between.
Would you allow that there if, if they wanted it?
Sure. If it was student-driven, that they, in, for a class project, if they wanted to, to run that comparison, that would be approved.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much.
But as, as, as a, as a course, you know, it would have to be a comparative religion type of, of course. It would go through the curriculum proposal process.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome. Mr. Mickles? Michaels, Mickles? I'm sorry.
No questions.
See you.
Everything's answered, so I don't want to.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. Anyone else? Okay. Well, thanks folks for coming. I would ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting. Moved and seconded. Any objections or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Meeting is closed.